Is Mr. Elton Nelson here? Mr. Nelson? Alright, well then let's just have a moment of silence and reflection if we will. Thank you. Let's now call this meeting to order if everyone joined me in salute to the flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright. Good evening, a great way to start the night, we have a Columbia Park mural project presentation presented by Parks Recreation and Public Facilities Manager Eric Schultz. I think some Stanislaw State students and staff are gonna join you. Alright, you have an entourage.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm glad to be back, it was just September twenty-fifth when I came to council for the approval of this project. And since that time, it's been a short time, less than a month, we have had a Sunday, September thirtieth, the work on the project started. Some of the members of the team behind me, they met at the park, they primed the wall, and then throughout that week they went back in the evening, and they projected the images up on the wall and stenciled them. From there, on Saturday and Sunday, October sixth and seventh, we had volunteer workdays, we had close to two hundred people volunteer, and they came from all over, a lot of support from the college, and tons of support just from different people in the community. And also on those two days, I want to recognize the chief and Turlock pal for providing lunch on both those days. So we had a meal for everybody out there, which was great. And then just last week, on October seventeenth, we had a great official unveiling of the mural. We walked over almost two hundred youth from our after-school programs, they all got to take part in it. It was very exciting and really appreciated, and I kind of go through that timeline, because I just want to recognize how much work and time and dedication to the mural that a lot of people spent. The people behind me, there's a lot of people who worked on it every day that couldn't be here tonight, but I just want to tell you they were professional, organized. They're engaging to the community when they came in, it was very welcoming when you walked up, you knew it was gonna go on. And I think everybody who participated was very excited and had a good time. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Jake Weigle, he was lead on the project, he's got a few things to say. Then after that, we're going to have Nicole Dunlap, she's a communications studies student, and she headed up the PR, and she has a video that they made, and she's gonna give you guys a little information, after that we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Jake.
So, project of this undertaking, I decided to write some notes down. Thanks again to the council and Mayor Soyseth, special thanks to Eric Schultz and Parks Art Recreation Commission for their assistance and support through the process. Just over a year ago, this project began as a solution to a concern presented by the mayor and students at Stan State, that of bringing art to the public. The appreciation for art, something that can greatly affect the lives of a community and citizens but doesn't usually hold a monetary value, is not lost on me, my colleagues, the students, and hopefully the citizens of Turlock and the Columbia Park neighborhood. In fact, although I was initially volunteered for this project in a sense, as a fresh faculty member of Stan State, I'm quite honored to be here tonight with the mural being completed with a few minor touch-ups necessary yet. Not only was the wall shape and size a challenge for the students designing the mural, what exactly to design was an interesting step as well. Initially, the large group held brainstorming sessions, gathered images that related to Turlock and surrounding community, and students tried to cram everything onto this wall. Input from the neighborhood was also an important step in the designs, and the students worked with children after school from Osborne and Wakefield Elementary, as well as students through Westside Ministries to gather information on colors, images, and symbolism that they would like to see in Columbia Park. We wish we could have included everything, but that design decision came down to the student artists, and that was a great exercise in and of itself for them to accomplish as a group. The final design was a bit of both, along with the personal touches that bring it all together. This was a big undertaking for some other reasons, many of which go unseen. It would be nice to have murals magically appear on walls everywhere, but the great part of the project like this is watching students understand the steps it takes for a mural, and how many people it directly affects in the process. It's budgeting, perhaps the least favorite of all. It's the practical application of design and paint that actually, and actually doing something with what we teach them, understanding the power of art not only to beautify but to communicate and create important meeting points for conversations in the community. Finally, it's the lessons and civic engagement as participants in a dialogue with a larger community outside of the Stan State parameters, and acting upon that which they believe makes a community better, stronger, in acting upon that. With that, I have a list of people to thank personally and as part of the group that I'm standing here with tonight. Again, thank you Mayor Soyseth for your vision and understanding of the importance of art in the community, your enthusiasm, and of course, your financial support from your mayor stipend. Thank you to the council members for your support as well, and I hope this opens up future possibilities for art in the community, and partnering with Stan State and the art department. Thanks again to Eric and Allison and Mark, everyone in Parks. Eric was really helpful in laying out the practical groundwork for this project to move forward, especially at times when it seemed like there wasn't, we weren't really moving at a pace necessary to complete this, like, you know, less than a month to paint everything. He's also great for ideas and connections within the neighborhood as part of our outreach. Thank you to Dean Twaydio, President John, who's here tonight with us, and my colleagues on the faculty committee. With me tonight are Susan Stevenson, also a new faculty member and the true painter of the group in the art department, Dr. Veronica Dawson, who's Communications, and whose students helped us with PR in the video in which you are about to see. Also, Dr. Samuel Benellas and Dr. Jose Diaz-Guerra, who couldn't be here tonight, whose students also contributed. The students who were involved with the project include the four main art majors who designed and helped paint the mural. Those are Myra Cortez, Haley Simon, Colia Wilson, and Jasmine Diaz, who you may see working on murals in surrounding communities such as Merced and Wilton. A long list of students from the art department, ethnic studies were very helpful when we needed to paint over one hundred and fifty-two feet of wall space. Again, students from Communications Department, especially Nicole Dunlap, who's here with us. And then one last person I really want to thank is Stan State alum Chris Moreno, who's the store manager at Sherwin-Williams, who donated the primer and helped us on costs for the paint. There's always more people that contributed in small ways, I wish I could thank them all, but again, just thanks for everything.
So, I'm Nicole Dunlap, and this is Kayla Santana, she was also very influential in working with us in the PR portion of it. So, we created a video for this, which this city has permission to use in the future if necessary. And basically, what, we wanted to really drive the point home of unity in Turlock, and that was what I was told was the point, so that's what we wanted to go for. So, we did everything from recruitment for volunteers, we did social media, we ran a social media page for it, we tried to make sure that people knew what was happening with local media, and just everyone getting the whole community involved. So, without further ado, here's our video.
Well, that's our presentation, we'll be happy to answer, they'll be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Absolutely, any questions or comments for the team? From the audience? I will say, at the very end, when the kids ran to their favorite section, the bear with the butterfly on its nose kind of stole the show for a while. The hummingbird, of course, was awesome, but it looks great, everything looks really, really good. So, thank you again, let's give them a round of applause one more time.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to another great partnership with Stanislaw State. City Manager Lawton and CSU President Ellen Jung have a report on the task force on diversity and inclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I would like to turn the podium over to President Jung, and invite her to discuss the progress so far. The university has been an outstanding partner for the city in this effort. They've really pulled the wagon in so many ways, and I'd like to let Ellen step up and take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Robert, and thank you, everyone, for letting me come and present a status update on what's been going on with the proposed City Council, City of Turlock-Stanislaw State University Joint Task Force on Diversity and Inclusion. So I believe it was about a month ago, September eleventh, where I presented virtually, from the telephone, I think, to the council about the proposal to do a joint task force on diversity and inclusion. And I have to say, really credit is due to individuals that were here prior to me when I came. The city council had already begun having a diversity summit relative to some of the issues that were happening in the city, and it was held at the university when President Shealy was there. So I was very happy that we continued to keep that relationship going, and so we held a second diversity summit on the campus with involvement from many members of the city. And out of that series of conversations, there was real strong interest in making it a little more formalized, so that the city and the university would partner together to really create both the city and the university that is very welcoming and affirmative of all the members who live in our wonderful city. So, as a result, the purpose and the charge of the proposed task force is to build relationships among members and leaders of the community to bring together a diverse group of people, city, university, community members, schools, faith-based community as well, to address issues of inclusion and diversity within Turlock, with the goal of making Turlock a city that feels safe for all residents by fostering inclusion, belonging, and acceptance. So, working together, the city and the university will work together to coordinate, encourage, and implement initiatives and activities to support an inclusive community in the values, worldviews, and cultures in our city. So we had a number of strategies that we're going to continue to want to implement, such as host educational, cultural tours, lectures, events, and activities, gather and review data relevant to diversity topics, establish closer regular communication and consultation between the city and the university regarding issues that affect residents in our area, and develop a list of stakeholder resources that could be promoted for future activities to build stronger relationships between the City of Turlock Police, the University Police, and other community safety-based organizations, and of course, to enhance communications such as developing a website, which we have, you know, have a sample already. Has that been launched, Naisha? Okay, so there is, and then, Naisha, you want to pass around some of the materials? We have a one-page handout for people, so you can go and see some of this information. We'll create brochures and posters to promote events and activities, compile lists of resources, and we will publish an annual report. So, members of the task force will include the City of Turlock, Stan State, Turlock Community. The terms are roughly three years, with staggering to keep the committee going, the task force going for a three-year period. And they will meet once a month for two hours on Wednesdays from six to eight, and will create additional subcommittees for special topics as needed as the discussion continues. So the great news is the application, the city allowed us to move forward on this proposal, and applications went out both through the city's connections as well as university and community connections, and applicants actually applied online. It was an online application, the deadline was Friday, October fifth. And the great news is that we received fourteen applications that were very high-quality, very passionate people who are very interested in trying to promote this kind of dialogue and interaction. And so those applications, all of them were reviewed by myself, city manager Bob Lawton, as well as a community member volunteer who was a member of the original diversity roundtable group. And as a result of the high quality of all the applications, we wanted to say that every application was seriously considered, and we would like to put all of their names forward as nominees for the city council. So, they're representatives from all different regions of the city, including faith-based organizations, faculty, public safety representatives, the USD's school districts are represented, and we have high school students who applied as well as university students. So it's really, really inclusive from that standpoint, reaches all the way from all the different ages as well. So, we're so excited, and I want to tell you that we did a bunch of research before we even proposed this, and when we looked at the Google searches and tried to see what other cities and universities have similar kind of task forces, we couldn't find any. At least if they have one, they don't have a website that's searchable, right? So, we may be one of the few cities that have done this together jointly, and I think that's a wonderful testament to the strength of the relationship that we have with the city and the university. So, we're so excited, and we're just happy to be able to launch this effort with the support of the council. So I'm happy to take questions.
Questions or comments for Ellen, the council? From the audience on this?
So, what I would say is that we did have an official application and deadline, so it's never too late to still let us know of your interest, because we will be creating, as I said, separate subcommittees. So depending on their interest and what kinds of activities they want to do, absolutely, they can be involved even in this first year round, this first go-round this year, because we, depending on their interest in how it dovetails with the things that the university and the city want to do in the forward, absolutely. And by the way, all the meetings are open to the public, and we welcome anyone to attend and listen as we debate and talk about future activities. So just let Naisha, she's raised her hand in the back. So she's in my office as Director of Special Projects, so she will take any interested individuals who wanted to join.
Any distant questions or comments? Alright, bringing it back. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, yeah, we're looking forward to the progress of this, and I think it's gonna strengthen the community.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, moving on, Halloween safety presentation, special briefing, excuse me, by our police chief, Ampar. I feel like you just did one of these, but it goes that quick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and our community. So, again, it's Halloween, it seemed like it was just yesterday. Actually, we did do this for the youth council, Mayor's Youth Council, right? That's what we did it. This is our opportunity to give back to our community and again, remind everyone regarding Halloween safety. It's about our kids, and even the big kids, including myself. Enjoy Halloween, I like having fun. But you have to be careful in what we do, and we have to be paying attention, especially when our kids are going out with costumes that are covering their face where they can't see where they're going, or in darkened streets without the appropriate lighting. And bottom line is, is we've got to be responsible and keep an eye on our kids and make sure, even after Halloween is over, that we go through their bags of candy and check that candy. So with that, we put together a little safety video, and then I'll cover some other things we're going to be doing on Halloween too.
It's that time of year again. Halloween is right around the corner, and the Turlock Police Department wants to give you a few reminders to help you and your family stay safe while trick-or-treating on Halloween. First things first, try to avoid dark-colored clothing or costumes. Use reflective tape or add glow sticks to your costume too. This will help drivers and vehicles to see you better. If you plan to be out past dark, make sure that you take a flashlight so you can see your way, and so cars can see you too. And remember to have a cellphone with someone in your group just in case. Ready, kids? Okay, let's go. Go out with a group and make sure there's at least one adult with you. Watch out for traffic, use the sidewalks, and only cross the street in designated areas or crosswalks. And be sure you look both ways before crossing the street. It's a good idea to stay in your neighborhood, since you're already familiar with the area. Only go to houses that are well-lit, so you know that someone's home. And never go inside someone's house that you don't know. Be sure that the adult in your group can see you at all times. All done, kids? Let's go home. Be sure to have an adult help look through your candy before you eat any of it. Look for any unwrapped candy or candy that is not in the original packaging. Anything that looks suspicious, you should throw away. Some points to remember. Go with a group and make sure there's at least one adult. Drivers, we all know that on Halloween night, there will be children out trick-or-treating. Be extra cautious and slow down. A reminder for all. If you see something, say something. Vandalism, a crime in progress, call dispatch at two zero nine six six eight twelve hundred, so officers can respond and address the issue as it's happening. And last but not least, the Turlock Police Department wants to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween.
So that was put together by our very talented crime and information analyst, that she did that on her break time, several breaks, obviously, but she did a good job, and the message is, is just, we've got to be responsible and take care of our kids, and it takes all of us to do it, it takes a village to make sure that everyone is safe. With that, we're also having at the Police Department on the thirty-first, trick-or-treat. So I invite everyone to bring their kids down to the Police Department. We've utilized some of our funding for crime prevention, and bought reflective bags, Halloween bags, et cetera, that we'll be giving to the kids. And yeah, we'll have some candy too. And with that, also downtown Turlock, we will have trick-or-treat going on through all the businesses and organizations. And Turlock Police Activities League will also have a table down there, and we'll be handing out quite a bit of candy. The Walmart store on Gear Road donated two hundred and six dollars worth of candy. I kind of posted it on Facebook, filled the whole back of my police car up with it, and it was kind of neat. You know, I said, hey, can you give us a couple bags? He said, no, I can't. Thought I can give you two hundred dollars' worth. Quite a few bags of candy, so just don't send me the dentist bill. But Halloween is fun, enjoy it, and hopefully you'll spend some of the time at the Turlock Police Department, or come downtown and see Turlock pal along with all of our other businesses that'll be out there for the kids. And with that, any questions you have, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any question, comments for the chief? How about from the audience? Comment was awesome, and I think that's shared by the entire council, thanks so much for your hard work.
Flyers are back there if you want them.
Alright, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to public participation, this is a time set aside for the public to address the council on any item that they'd like. You'd be limited to five minutes for your comments, you can fill out a blue card in the back and bring it on up. So at this time, I have no blue cards, for a separate item. Is anyone like to address the council? Alright, seeing none, I'll close public participation. Motion waiving reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title. Do you have a second? We have a motion by Councilmember Dehart, seconded by Councilmember Skare, clerk, please call the roll.
Waiving reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boublak?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Declaration conflicts and interests and disqualifications, seeing none. Disclosure of top ten maximum contributors is within the packet. And then consent calendar, we do have two items that have been requested to be removed. One, five G for separate consideration by Councilmember Skare, and also, Mr. Treewiler has asked for item five D to be separated. So, any other items? Okay, so what is the pleasure of the council on the consent calendar, less items, D, and G? So, motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Adopting the amended consent calendar? Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boublak?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Let's go in alphabetical order tonight, so alright, item D, who wants to take that one on? Mr. Treewiler, would you like to come to the microphones, voice your comments? Mr. Cook can make a statement first, I like it.
Evening, Mayor Soyseth, members of the councils. This is a warning of bid to Thatcher Company of California for liquid chlorine for the Turlock Regional Water Quality Control Facility for a period of twelve months, with an option to extend the agreement for three further months, three further one-year terms, in an annual amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And liquid chlorine is used at the Turlock Regional Water Quality Control Facility to disinfect treated wastewater, to remove bacteria and pathogens. Once it's been chlorinated, it gets de-chlorinated using sodium hy, sorry, sodium bisulfate, before it's discharged into the San Joaquin River or in the future into the Delta Midota Canal. So happy to answer Milt's questions.
Mr. Treewiler, what's up?
Mayor, council, staff, fellow Turlock citizens. Yes, I do have a few questions, again, I just want to understand what's going on. Four hundred and twenty tons per year, that sounds like a lot of chlorine. And this is used for the treatment of wastewater, I do understand that, but then we're discharging this treated wastewater into the San Joaquin River. So are we guaranteeing that there will be no damage done to the river with all this chlorine that's going into this treatment?
So we've been chlorinating for decades, and again, before it's discharged in the river, it does get de-chlorinated with sodium, sorry, sodium bisulfate. It cannot leave the wastewater treatment plant until it's been adequately de-chlorinated. We have testing equipment, sensors at the rear end of the plant. If it does not meet a certain chlorine residual, the pump shut down and that water can't be discharged. So we have some felsates there.
So, and apparently this is the least expensive way of treating our water, I mean, there are other methods. Do you want to just comment on those for a second?
I'd love to. So uh liquid chlorine is the cheapest form. The um next best alternative is sodium hypochlorite, which is uh like a basic Clorox, it's liquid bleach. Uh we did price that out when I got these bids back in September. And so we're spending a little over three hundred thousand dollars a year under this contract. If went to sodium hypochlorite, it would be one point three million dollars, so an additional million dollars. Um so sodium hypochlorite does have the advantage, it's less of a hazardous material, but uh for a million dollar cost difference, it's quite a difference. The other alternative that most people are moving towards now is ultraviolet light, so using uh high strength ultraviolet light. Again, that would cost us at least, last time we cost us out at least a million dollars extra a year in electrical costs and ten to fifteen million dollars in capital costs to convert to that. So again, it's a most expensive uh cost option.
Okay, I noticed in the scope of work here, suppliers of furniture, labor, equipment, materials, process, implements, tools and machinery except for otherwise specified which are necessary and required to provide the services and shall provide or perform such services in accordance with the standards and professional of its profession and the specifications attached here and then. So in other words, they are not only going to provide the chlorine, but they're also going to provide the equipment that puts us into the uh wastewater treatment portion of it. I'm I don't understand that.
Okay, so this standard language from all our contracts. So the way this works, every Wednesday, we get a delivery of eight one-ton cylinders of liquid chlorine. They drive up to the uh chlorine building where we have wastewater treatment plant operators uh standing by. The um contractor delivers the tanks into the building. We have a hoist and crane. We set the the cylinders in the room and then we connect them to our chlorine system. So they do other than delivering, get them off the trucks, you don't actually connect them to our system. But again, that's standard language that they provide everything they need to 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 provide that delivery to the city.
Okay, uh I think this will bring us down to just about the last question. So would you tie all this together? In other words, we have waste treatment which we have to dispose of, but I have had the impression that the majority, or I actually had the impression all of this was going to the Del Porto Del Porto Water District for irrigation purposes. So why do we have this extra water or why is this water going into the San Joaquin River? We just dedicated a pipeline that goes under the San Joaquin River, that's my impression, that delivers this water to the district. So what is the reason for putting this water in the San Joaquin River rather than just sending it over to Del Porto Irrigation District?
Great point. So last Friday, we had the groundbreaking for the pipelines. If we start the destruction on the pipeline, that pipe won't be finished next December. So next December, all of this water, well, nearly all of this water will go to Del Porto Water District, the Delta Midota Canal. And I'd just make a plug, some of this water still goes to Turlock Irrigation District for uh cooling at the Warner Energy Center and some goes to Petretti Park periodically for landscape irrigation.
Will will any of this water during our major drought years when we will uh be required to supply water to TID's this district with our agreement, will some of this water also be used uh for them and how do they acquire that water?
So in the term of the water sales agreement with TID for the drinking water plant, they'll receive two thousand acre feet per year during the irrigation season. So that's about three million gallons a day, which is about uh thirty, forty percent of our flow. That will be directed in a pipeline into uh TID lateral floor, which is canal drive. Right now, our pipeline, our recycle water pipeline that goes from the wastewater treatment plant to Petretti Park goes up, I can't remember if it's Franz or Diane, one of those streets, and goes under lateral floor. As it goes under lateral floor, we'll have a turnout there and provide that water to TID in the future.
Michael, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions about the uh guy's vice mayor?
Mi- Michael, this one's for you again, sorry. Yeah. So you mentioned that um other municipalities are moving to the ultraviolet light uh purification process with it being, there being such a cost delta. Can you estimate why they are doing that?
Uh couple of reasons. One, um the the byproducts from chlorination, uh disinfection byproducts like trihalomethanes and halicetic acid are known uh are contaminants in drinking water. So if you're if you're discharging into a waterway that's a source of drinking water for somebody else, there's very tight restrictions on that, which basically forces you to move out of chlorination. So if you're in a water body or a watershed that you discharge in a river, that river is an intake to a drinking water plant further down, you pretty much can't chlorinate anymore. Um secondly, um it's also a very hazardous material, liquid chlorine. And so people, some people just from a safety perspective, move away from it. For for our city, our utility operations, this is the single largest risk we have is our liquid chlorine. Um but about ten years ago, we built a new chlorine building, state of the art. We have a very rigorous training and safety program, certification program. And with the uh pro- you know, protective equipment, the self-contain- self-contained breathing apparatus, which we work with training with the fire department on, we feel we have a good program. But longer term, it would be nice to get away from have handling such a hazardous material. But recognize it comes at a cost.
Yes.
And finally, uh this money is coming from?
So this comes from the payment of your your utility bills, so your sewer rates. So these costs of of chemicals are covered in your sewer bill.
And will there be an increase to cover this or this is gonna come perfectly?
No, there's no need to increase the rates to cover this increased cost.
Thank you.
Just some questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Scare?
Yeah, Michael, since we got you up there, I wasn't gonna go there, but since you're up here, um you were asked a question today and I just like to share with other people that may have the same uh type of question in mind. Do uh you were asked why we wouldn't uh be able to use some of this water, shipping it east instead of west and trying to use it to uh
Right.
For our aquifer, recharge our aqua- aquifers.
So in our groundwater basin, the area of uh overuse we have is on the east side of the of the basin up towards kind of uh around Turlock Lake, lake, south of Turlock Lake, up in towards uh Bleecko, that area. And we looked at a a project back in the mid nineties to pump all of our 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 recycle water or wastewater uphill about fifteen miles up into those foothills there to recharge the aquifer. At the time, we couldn't find someone to partner with us to help pay for that project. So the cost of adding the treatment at the time, building the pipelines and pumping uphill was uh cost prohibitive. So um unfortunately, with that, the opportunity passed us by, we worked on the Harder Dream Pipeline and ultimately the North Valley Recycled Water Pipeline. Obviously, working with TID on the drinking water plant allows us to do some local inlet recharge and provide water back to TID that they can actually work with Eastside Water District potentially on some recharge projects. You'll see, you're a member of the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, so you'll see some projects hopefully over the next uh year or so where Eastside is looking at uh property at the Turlock Airport to use a TID facility that runs right through that airport to get excess rainwater or excess irrigation water and recharge the aquifer uh that way. So it's a very cost-effective option.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Treewiler, this is what happens when you pull an item, we get all excited to ask questions. All right, thank you. Without a further discussion, what's the pleasure of the council on this item?
Defense to you, Mayor.
Do we have this? All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Dehart, seconded by Councilmember Iscare. Clerk, please call the roll.
Awarding RFB number eighteen zero two three and approving an agreement with Thatcher Company of California, Inc. for liquid chlorine for the Turlock Regional Water Quality Control Facility for a period of twelve months with an option to extend the agreement for three additional one-year terms in an annual amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars for a total not to exceed amount of one million four hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars over the four-year term of the agreement if all renewal periods are exercised. Councilmember Iscare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boobla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And item G, Councilmember Scare?
Yes, I can go back to my notes. Um the question I had, and I think it's pretty much been covered, but uh I didn't want to just just put it out there so that everyone else knows what's going on. Um my concern was my concern was with the subordination uh part of this resolution. Uh I just wanted to make sure that the city was still not going to be uh risking anything by subordinating uh their position to the bank. And um and I understand that the value of the property versus the loan is okay, so we're we don't have a problem there. My other concern was that if there were a default on the next payment due date, how would that affect, are we are we still, do we still have the option to ask for the all the fees to be paid in in uh in advance? Or would we still be, or would that put us behind the bank on that issue as well?
And did you get those answers or whose answers?
I I got some that I I think, I suppose they had a little bit of information that that to share, just to make sure everybody's aware of what how that's gonna work.
No, absolutely. Um Mayor, members of the council, great questions. Councilmember Scare, when we prepared this, the risk and making sure the city was covered was absolutely the goal here. Um we don't, uh usually the city does not uh agree to subordinating our our liens. Usually, we like to be first in line. Um in this case, we looked at the evidence that was provided. As you mentioned, given the amount that the property is valued, given the amount of the loan that is being asked to go ahead of us in line, if you will, and the amount of the fees being deferred, which is around a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, um with the first payment already being made, the risk was minimal. What happens is we pretty much are in the same place as we were. If we were first in line, given the amounts, we would still be secured. If for some reason they would default, we would still have the same available remedies of making sure that we have the lien on the property. Um the biggest fear is if somebody is is foreclosed on or just doesn't pay. Um that's what the subordination is is usually, that's what the where the risk is, where the first in line takes all the money. Uh because it's like the home crisis, right? When the the loan on your house was owed more than what the house is worth. So the bankruptcy happened. Anybody second in line wasn't gonna get anything. In this case, we stand in the same position. Now, as the staff report mentions, there's a little bit of a risk with any lien that we have if property values go too low. Um knock on wood that we're not there. But again, there's significant difference in uh in property value that we felt as though, staff felt as though it was a it was a it was a minimal risk.
Any additional questions, council, or from the audience on this item? Okay, bringing it back. What's the pleasure on item G?
Move to advance.
Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Scare, seconded by Vice Mayor Jacob. Clerk, please call the roll.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement subordinating the lien agreement with New Life Christian Center of Turlock for deferred payment of development impact fees in a form approved by the interim city attorney. Councilmember Iscare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boobla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on, final readings. City clerk, what do we have?
Amending Turlock Municipal Code Title Two, Chapter Seven, Section Zero Eight regarding bidding requirements as introduced at the October ninth, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting. Councilmember Iscare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boobla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Onto item seven A, request to authorize the issuance by the Colorado Health Facilities Authority of its revenue bonds. Director Kelly Jacob, center.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um the item before us tonight is um that we are uh holding a public hearing on behalf of Covenant Retirement Communities pursuant to Internal Revenue Code nineteen eighty-six, section one forty-seven F, and authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds, series two thousand and eighteen by the Colorado Health Facilities Authority, and one or more series in aggregate principal amount not to exceed sixty-eight million, of which not more than four million shall be for the benefit of Covenant Retirement Communities West, DBA, Covenant Village of Turlock, Covenant Village Care Center, um Sequoia Place and Covenant Village Turlock Care Center. Um we are, um we've been asked to hold this public hearing on behalf of Covenant Village or Covenant Retirement Communities, as I stated. This is not a debt of the city. It will uh would never become a debt of the city. We are just the um, we are the public um forum for them to have the public hearing and they have asked us to do this. The city has done this in the past. And um so this is um nothing that um, nothing that hasn't been done before. Um I'd be happy to um answer any questions regarding the um process and um interim city attorney is also available to answer any questions about the process.
And if I just may add, um this is called usually a TFR hearing. It's the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Tax Act of nineteen eighty-two. As um as was mentioned already, um usually jurisdictions are asked to do, the city councils are asked to do this pursuant to the law where tax-exempt bonds are being issued for private projects. You see this a lot with affordable housing, hospitals, other private proj- projects. Not our bonds, as as was mentioned, but just a requirement of the under section one forty-seven F. Um again, the city's not involved with the projects as far as inspecting or making sure they get built. The city does retain its its uh land use authority, so just because you you agree to this doesn't mean you're going to be approving anything that happens in the future. You still have those rights. But again, just required um because they are tax-exempt bonds, um the cities require the jurisdiction, city councils require to to do this.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Dehart?
Is there a representative of CRC West here?
I believe there are. I think we have two right here.
Good. Maybe we could hear from one of them or both of them.
Good evening. I'm David Erksen. I'm Representative Covenant Village of Turlock and um we're in the process of a bond financing for projects in California and also some other states that where we have um where we have properties similar to Covenant Village. And so this is a part of the um the financing process and I've been to a couple other uh municipalities for um for these hearings, for this um for this major initiative for Covenant.
Good to see you again, David.
Thank you.
So, yeah, as I understand the the uh requirement for the bonds or the the desire for the bonds, are you looking at a major expansion within the confines of Covenant Village of Turlock? Or does it, would it apply to Seattle, Santa Barbara, San Diego?
So we're still working on on an initiative to um create a town center at each one of our campuses. And the Covenant Village of Turlock Town Center opened up around two thousand and eight. Uh our property in Connecticut does not have a town center. So a major part of this financing is going to the um to to the Connecticut campus. Uh then we also have a project in Illinois and a project in San Diego at Mount Miguel. Uh the other projects are for um for uh adding uh to our health facilities in Turlock and uh just increasing the um the resident experience uh at the health facilities and that's what the four million dollars is for.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Additional questions? Yes, Vice Mayor?
This question might be for Kelly. Um I I'm assuming that there is some amount of staff time that was put into preparing this, at least for us tonight and whatever other processes in place. Um are we reimbursed for that at all?
Um actually, um Covenant um Retirement Communities prepared all the documents and they actually um prepared um the staff report. It was then given to us. We made comments, sent it back. Um the interim city attorney's office did review it, but for the time that I spent on it or Marie Lawrence they spent on it was minimal at best.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments or questions from the council or the audience on this item? All right, bringing it back. Uh what's the pleasure of the council on this item?
For advance, Dave.
Do I have a second? Kevin, motion by Councilmember Dehart, seconded by Councilmember Boobla. Clerk, please call the roll.
Authorizing the issuance by the Colorado Health Facilities Authority of its revenue bonds, series two thousand and eighteen, Covenant Retirement Communities, Inc., and one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed sixty-eight million dollars. The series two thousand and eighteen bonds, of which not more than four million dollars shall be for the benefit of Covenant Covenant Retirement Communities West, DBA Covenant Village of Turlock, Covenant Village and Care Center, Sequoia Place and Covenant Village of Turlock Care Center and related matters. Councilmember Iscare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boobla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to scheduled matters, a request to approve the surplus uh the surplus for the energy burst and Scandinavian wooden statue for public purchase and directing proceeds into the Tourism Fund for Public Art Projects. Director Mangiller?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh this is a follow-up item relative to the two pieces of decommissioned artwork, the uh Scandinavian wooden statue, as well as the energy burst that was formerly placed inside the old auto mall sign. Um per council's request, uh we took these uh two items to our park Per council's request, we took these two items to our Parks Arts and Recreation Commission for review. We vetted several options in terms of how to manage the artwork on a go-forward basis. And this is essentially the results of that effort. And so through the discussion with our Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, as well as several community members who attended that public hearing, it is the commission's recommendation that both pieces of artwork be surplus through the public process. And any proceeds generated through that process would be redirected back to the Tourism Fund. There is a arts, public art component you might recall us talking about previously. And it would seem appropriate that any revenue generated by this surplus sale be directed back into that fund for any future art projects. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, councilmember Booblaq.
So originally, did we, where'd the money come from to, to get them there and set them up?
So it was, my, my recollection is that the wooden, the wooden Scandinavian statue was essentially a gift from the community representing the Scandinavian population that was here. And that, as I had mentioned originally, when we came to council, that was back in nineteen ninety-six. And so it's not my recollection that there were any public funds used for that. The energy burst, I'm sorry, I can't recall if that was a, if there were public funds, like a public call for art. I, I don't have that information. I'm sorry about that.
Additional questions or comments? From the audience on this item? Okay, bringing it back. What is the pleasure of the council? Yes, councilmember Booblaq.
My, my only concern is that we've got some financial problems and it may not be that much money. But right now, I think we shouldn't be sucking money away for art. I think we need to put it back into what we were doing on a daily basis. And should we have a surplus at some point, then we can start working towards having art and such. But at this point, I think our priorities need to be just the day-to-day duties and our employees.
Okay. Additional comments or questions or substitute motions or what's the pleasure of the council? Yes.
What, what costs are associated with decommissioning these?
What we're, there's no cost to decommission it. I think what councilmember Booblaq's referring to is any revenue that's generated through the surplus process. And we really don't have any idea what those numbers will look like. It's really going to depend on when it gets, it goes through the process and if there are people that bid on it and want to purchase it.
Do you need a direction of where the funds go tonight? Or can you go through the, can you surplus it and then once it goes through the process of going through the bid process, some purchase it, it comes back to the council at that point to say where it goes, whether it be general fund or tourism? Does that make sense?
Yes, and yeah, and I can work with the city manager if you'd like to delegate that authority to him. We can determine where that funding goes. Again, it's really going to be dependent on, I mean, I, I want to be hopeful that it's going to generate some revenue. But I, I'm not certain at this time how much interest there will be. But if we do receive revenue from the surplus, we can absolutely make that determination later as to where that fund will be directed to.
What is the going rate for a wooden Scandinavian statue?
I, I could not tell you, but I do know that, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, right? And so there's, I'm sure, I'm hopeful that there's somebody out there that will see some value in that, so.
All right.
My concern here is just that, that the motion actually designates that any proceeds would go to that. So if, if I could, I'd like to make a motion just saying that the proceeds go back into the general fund.
And I would support that.
Okay, so I have a motion by councilmember Booblaq, seconded by council member Dehart. Sorry, clerk, please call the roll.
Approving the surplus for the energy burst and Scandinavian wooden statue for public purchase and directing proceeds into the general fund. Councilmember Iskare?
No.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soise.
Yes, motion carries four to one. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Allison. All right, moving on to staff updates. It looks like we have a written update for item three A and then also written and verbal for item three B. If Ms. Quintero, councilmember Iskare, did you have some comments on that? Or were those answered on the transit center's security? We moved on to staff updates.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I did, actually.
Might be chief too.
Yeah, I sent out the question and again, I received an answer from the chief and the city manager. But the question, I just, I just wanted to see if we can actually get a written quote or whatever on the difference between having two security guards there twenty-four seven from a private firm as compared to, because I know we're shorthanded and it'll be a while before we get two transit police officers over there anyway. So I just want to see what the cost difference would be between the two.
Sure. The item for the RFP and actually making the selection will be on the November thirteenth agenda. And so we can definitely prepare that information and bring that back with that item to have that for you.
Would that be sufficient? That's not, I think we'd all appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Absolutely. All right, moving on, four A, we have a written update and then item, excuse me, yeah, seven A, we have a written as well for police and fire. Thank you. City manager comments? Anything?
Just a couple of observations, Mr. Mayor, if I might. It was a great pleasure to be a part of the mayor's youth conference last week. And I will let others speak to the, to other parts of the conference, but I wanted to make sure to thank our division directors for their presentations, for the quality of their enthusiasm for this event, for their ability to connect with these students and open the door to them for what for many of us is a lifetime in public service. And if it doesn't manage to draw them in, at least they're aware of what goes on at city hall. And each and every one of our department heads had outstanding job. I also, it was also my pleasure to attend a meeting of the city safety committee last week. And we've got some outstanding city staff who are involved with that, make a great commitment of their time. And I think are looking forward, looking forward to the opportunity to take those responsibilities to a next level to impact issues that are important in terms of not just the day-to-day prevention of accidents and those kinds of things, but how do we respond? How do we make ourselves resilient to what could be catastrophic events as an organization? How do we harden ourselves? And I want to thank them for their service. I also enjoyed a visit to one of the after-school programs run by Parks and Rec at the Brown School. Allison Van Gilder and Karen Packwood were my escorts for the afternoon. And it, it's great to see the work that's done with, with the young, very young students. And then finally, it isn't, you know, when you buy a new car, you know, you start noticing that car all over the place. Everybody else is driving one. Well, since I've gotten one of these shirts, every place I go in the city of Turlock, I see people wearing them. I want to thank, I want to thank firefighters who have invested themselves so heavily in this fundraiser and into the fight against breast cancer. And let them know that their work is bearing tangible results in the most unlikely places. And it's so good to see a quorum of council wearing these shirts as well.
Are you calling out the attorney and vice mayor on this?
I would, I would, I would note that the, that the attorney is a colleague of mine and not a supervisor. And I, I, I
That holds it deeper and deeper.
Calling out is such an ugly word, Mr. Mayor. And I would note, I would note, I would note that councilmember Jacob is sporting a very fashionable pink pocket square.
There it is, there it is.
Almost invisible to the naked eye, yet a presence nonetheless. And this concludes the entertainment portion of our program, Mr. Mayor.
That's a note to leave on. I like it. All right. Item eleven, any matters too late for the agenda, non-agenda items, for anyone, no. We're moving on. Council items for future consideration, looking left and right. How about council comments? Yes, councilmember Dehart.
Mayor, very briefly, I, as the council rep to the library committee, I, I took the opportunity to go to the meeting on the sixteenth where the vision, the visual for the new library addition was introduced. And the whole evening was kicked off by Supervisor Kiasa. Both Diane Bartlett and the county librarian were there, very well-attended at Covenant Village. And the plans were captivating, to say the least, because it retains the feel and the look of the, of the park setting at the current library location. Oh boy, it really is going to be a nice facility with public meeting spaces and so on and so forth. So very pleased to have attended that on behalf of the council.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Additional comments? All right, moving on, closed session. What items do we have?
Mayor, we have two items under closed session. We have conference with labor negotiators under California Government Code five four nine five seven point six A. We also have conference with legal counsel and suspended litigation under Government Code five four nine five six point nine D two.
All right, do we have a motion adjourned to closed session? We have a motion by Vice Mayor Jacob, seconded by councilmember Booblaq. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned to close. Thank you.